Good afternoon, the board workshop for July 25, 2019 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belkirk.
Present.
Mrs. McGoole.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This workshop has been called to discuss capital outlay priorities. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Penny Zerker, Chief Operating Officer. She'll lead us in the discussion. Ms. Zerker.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by introducing my staff that are here with me today. Mike Harla, Joanne Clark, Director of Accounting Services, and Wendy Knippel, Accounting Manager overseeing capital outlay within accounting services. These two staff members have actually led and run the process for the capital allocation budget. And Ms. Knippel will be participating, explaining the process that was developed, and she ran to develop it as we go through the presentation. For today, we're going to start out by talking about the capital allocation process to date and our planned changes for it next year based on the feedback provided by the Board at the June 25th workshop. We'll take a quick look at the capital requests that we have to date, including an analysis on what the Board requested at the June 25th. And then we'll open it up for Board discussion and questions. Anticipate presentation, maybe 20 minutes at max, and then the rest of it will be us looking to see what discussion you have and where we go from there. So with that, we'll move on to Wendy Knippel to tell you the process.
Okay, so on this slide here, you have the committee members that served on the committee, the capital allocation committee this year, representing mostly the Cabinet members. We did change who participated in this committee based upon items that we saw from the prior year. The way the committee ranked these requests, we did tweak them a little bit based upon what we had seen. The first item being safety, health, and security having a direct impact to students, meaning directly impacting, not around about way. The next item was legal requirements to meet or maintain the standards, and then continuing with existing or new program commitments if that applied. The next criteria was upgrading or retrofitting existing facilities and equipment for instructional support, administrative space, equipment, buses. So this included facilities as well as equipment, retrofitting current or additional spaces for specific functions. The next item that we looked for ranking was future direction or programs that meet strategic objectives if that applied. And then the final one was a special consideration for projects that aligned with the Board's current budget priorities or will neglect impact on the general fund unless funded by capital. This was not necessarily everyone, it was just an item that we felt that would take a special consideration needed for that.
Can you ask, can I ask where, who developed these?
This was developed in the prior year's capital request, and we kind of fine tuned it a little bit because in the prior request, we saw where there was a little bit of lead weight, and the committee thought they needed a little bit more guidance, so we kind of honed in a little bit.
So we being the committee?
The first committee, which was for 1718, defined it themselves. So the committee members that existed that year set the rankings. They tweeted or tweaked them and then ran them past the committee to get the committees input utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, this is the capital planning timeline, which we had for this year's process. A memo was sent out to the Cabinet members notifying of the changes that we were going to be implementing to this year's process. That was sent out on February 6th, and then we started the communication and scheduling of the meetings so that we could accommodate the majority of the committee in attending these meetings and getting items secured, conference rooms secured for the meetings, and trying to meet everyone's scheduled dates. The request for capital request forms and instructions went out to the Department on February 12th. This went out to all the department heads, and that was asked to disseminate to their people as far as submitting those requests with the due date of March the 4th. That was when everything was supposed to be turned into accounting, all their requests. From March the 4th to the 13th, that's when we were going through the requests, making sure proper signatures were on, because we had, each request had to be signed off by some department heads. ET had to sign off to Han's department, so even though she may not have initiated it, we had them sign off so they were aware if there was going to make future demands on their department. We also looked to see if it was qualified from LCI, if these dollars were unqualified. So that was kind of the review process that was going on from when we received them, and then getting the proper signatures. In March, we had our committee meetings. We had our first kickoff meeting on March the 14th, and this was basically explaining the process to the committee, what our ranking was, how we were going to be scoring these sheets, excuse me, how they were going to be scoring these sheets, and then also giving them the first 15 requests. After that process, we had about $30 million worth of requests. There was a subset of people that came back and said, "We're going to withdraw a request because we know there's no way we're going to fund it," so we're going to eliminate some off that list. And I believe the list that you saw in prior meetings, you saw where they were removed by those cabinet members.
And some of those also were already funded from this year from dollars that we were able to find, right?
Yeah, so they, we did not, the committee did not take them.
It was a mixture of drop in funds.
Right, they were withdrawn from the submitter.
This process was looking only at new dollars from 1920. Many of these projects, requests that get turned in, had allocations from prior years, and in some cases, multiple years available for their use as well.
Thank you.
So that's what came out of the March 14th meeting. The March 26th and 28th meeting, that's where the committee sat down. We asked the requesters to come to the meeting to answer questions, further explain their requests, so that the committee could score those sheets. They scored the sheets, it was done in privacy, it was not an open forum where they, everyone saw what they scored. They were given a number so that they could score a 1 through, a 0 through 3, how they felt they wanted to, and then those were tallied after the meeting on the 28th, and then the scores went out to the committee members. Going through, we reviewed the funding in accounting services and ranked them based upon the rankings that we saw of the committee and the funding needs that were available. So we had gone down from 27 million, and we needed to take it down to 15. So we looked to see where we thought, based upon the committee rankings. At that time, we took those recommendations to the CFO on April 24th, went through some of our rationale, where we came up either fully funding, not funding, or partially funding. And then the CFO took that, her recommendations, took it to Cabinet, got input from them. Cabinet had seen that, and then she took it on to the superintendent on April 25th.
So you, so the committee evaluated among all of the Cabinet members, came together with a list, and then it went to accounting services who decided that how much they were going to get were specific, and that's where we get these proposed allocations?
No, sir.
Okay.
But, so the purpose of the committee is to evaluate the request individually, mutually exclusive from each other. They were not trying to determine funding, just the value of the request, how did it meet to the ranking, and its importance with the priorities of the district. That came back, accounting runs this process, then they look at it based on what the discussion was in the capital allocation committee meeting, how they ranked it, funding that was still available from prior years, and the importance to the priority and strategic plan. And they made a recommendation to me. I then took theirs, and based on same criteria and my experience, I made a recommendation to Cabinet, and I made some changes to what accounting did. We went through it at Cabinet quite extensively. All of Cabinet had input, and in fact, Ms. Hand and I had discussion at the end of Cabinet where we swapped some things around that fit her needs better based on what we were looking at. Cabinet was happy with where it was at, and then we, then I took it on to the superintendent. No one group or person made the decision on this. It was a collaborative effort to come up with what was the best funding with 15 million we had.
And where was the justification for the 15, 16 million dollars?
She's going to show you the calculation on how we got to that in just a moment. It's the finite money left after the allocation.
So just for instance, the computer refreshment project that was requested at $5 million went to accounting services, they said, "We only need 1.6 million," and you made the adjustment at 1.25.
Yes, I gave them what we had given them last year, looking at, in my functions, when I looked at it, was the priorities, the complaints that we've received in the district. HVAC issues at the schools, technology is extremely important, Mr. Chino knows how I support their group, have provided them additional dollars in other ways. But in that, with all of the requests that Ms. Hand was bringing that were safety related, I believe I gave capital renewal more money over what accounting had recommended and reduced in the technology. And again, it's just my recommendation, certainly not the final allocation.
Sure. Thank you. So moving on, when we're building our numbers, we're building it based upon an estimate, and that was given to you at the April workshop. We finally, we get our numbers in June and see really where they're coming in. We got those late, very late June, where we can go in and say, "Okay, these are really what the numbers were looking at," and look to see if the number has gone up, which it did in this case. And then we've had these last two budget workshops, the 25th and then also today. So based upon the feedback that you have given us, we have, are showing you a proposed fiscal year '21, 21 tentative, where we are making the changes, and those are in bold. Item number three, that the request will be sent out to, when we send them out to the departments, we will send them out to you as well, that you, at that time, you are getting the same timeframe of getting them submitted to the committee.
So that will allow you to make, if you have a capital outlay request you want to make, then you can complete the form and send it back to us so we can include it in the evaluation.
So that would be going through and including, and with the other ones to the committee, as well as number seven, moving that up so that the evaluation by the school members is before the CFO is making that recommendation, and then at number 11, where we have the workshops again. So you would basically be looking at these three times in the time of feedback.
So number seven would be as soon as the committee completes their evaluation and their scores have been ranked, then that and the forms, final forms would get sent back out to you for your review, and any feedback and input you want to provide on some evaluation. And then number 11, we have gone over this last time capital, we will make in the budget workshop in June a little more robust on capital discussion, and then if we again need to do another July workshop, we certainly will.
So moving on to the available LCI funding, which was, the question was right, is where did we come up with these numbers? When we did our estimate back in March 13th, we took the value, and this came from, out of a committee that Mr. Zerker went to that says, "Our number should be a little bit higher," so we went with that higher number, and it's the 1.5 millage, and we can only budget the 96% based upon state rules. We took out the contingency, we had a contingency coming in of 4.3. We take out our maintenance funding, our debt service, and our property insurance. Those are standard ones that have been funded every year. Then we're taking out to hold that contingency, which is the exact same amount of the 4.3 million, and what we showed is available for funding based upon our preliminary estimates was 14.8 million.
That changed to 15.2 because there was $400,000 that had been allocated in previous year that couldn't be spent in that year, so we made a swap between years, which increased it from 14.8 to the 15.2.
So going back, the tax levy is 96% in years past. Have we seen that number come in at a higher rate at the end of the year?
Absolutely.
Because we're only doing it because of property.
If you look at the footnote at the bottom, the average tax collections for the past three years have been 96.79%.
Got it.
But we can only, we have to show the 96% as one line, and if you look at the second column, that's where we're adding additional amount, so that's where we're putting that little bit apart above the 96%. We do have to show that on a separate line item.
We've added that, and also to clarify, the school taxable property value here wasn't for the committee, that was what Revenue Board at Tallahassee had said for us, and was the projection coming into 1920. The current estimate is our actual certified property value.
And that was, that was our local millage rate that we, that came in a little bit higher than it normally was?
This is, all of them have come in about .75 to .79 on average, higher.
Right.
So the current estimate is the rate that we had just received at the very end of June, so we're taking that. We're putting our tax levy at the 96%, and then we're adding that additional amount that we believe we will receive based upon our average.
That's 500 million.
Correct. We're adding in the contingency that we saw, that will be coming into this year from prior years, that we keep as contingency. We're subtracting out our maintenance funding, our debt service, when they reevaluate the numbers that went down a little bit, and then our property insurance went up a little bit, and those are based upon what you'll see in the budget. And then we're subtracting out what we consider for our contingency, taking that down just below 4.3 million.
So just for your information, that contingency is used in a variety of ways during the year if needed. So if we're working on a project and the cost gets an overrun, that the change order can't be covered in Ms. Hand's budget, she'll look to us to help, or if there's some kind of an emergency issue, or some kind of new priority from either the Board or the superintendent, those funds are then used during the year to make sure we can fund that, as long as it's an allowable expense according to the local capital improvement statutes.
And this is, I think I already told you this last time, this is, there's no requirement, state or department statutory that we have to keep this contingency at a certain percentage?
No, prior to my taking over the allocation a few years ago, it was kept at 10 million. Mr. Theodore kept it at 10, I actually reduced it. I try to keep it between 4, 4.5, up to 5 at the max if we can, just to be able, it was just, two years ago, we actually ended up using it all that year, and we didn't have anything to bring into the new. So there are times, I think so, Mr. Susan has alluded, you know, when we did Irma and Matthew paying for the repairs, some of that would come out of this contingency.
So Penny, what I'm hearing then is there's not, we pretty much use this 4.2 million to, like, if an air conditioning breakdown doesn't cover over something, or cost overrun in facility issues?
If she has a, she'd come short on a fund, this is where I would take money to help her.
And what else would, what else, can you just give me an idea, just being a newbie, where else we, who may have also tapped this for, is it particularly, mostly facilities?
No, no, it could be a need, a specific need in technology that we may have that has come up in the middle of the year if we were going to do a new system. I'm trying to think of something directly in the past, but it's something that hasn't been thought of and planned for as part of the budget process, but during the year, facility assessment comes to my mind, but I can't use this money to pay for facility assessment. Security hardware, something that in the middle of the year, we decide, "We want to go do this, if I can sell it through LCI, then we can use those funds for that." This past year, we haven't had a need to dip into those funds, and we do anticipate them, as you can see, the majority of it coming into the new year to be reallocated down into the same contingency.
So just for point clarification, if Ms. Hand's projects go over, she doesn't have to cut into her current budget to do that, she can ask you for the contingency funds to add to?
That is a possibility. When we go to give contingency funds, we actually work with the department to really see what's in their budget and what they can do. One thing for Ms. Hand and Mr. Chino, and we have been talking to them about this year, is some of their general monies, such as the capital renewal. We talked this year about planning the list of what that would be, that helps us be better about knowing per capital renewal is planned for A, B, C, D, and E, and then we can make a better judgment as to those projects, do we risk those projects by having our fund, or do we take out of contingency? We don't just grab money out of contingency if there appears to be budget, and right now, there's been even not just the current year budget, but prior year budgets that haven't been spent, and it really is in our interest as a district to get those prior year budgets spent first. So it just, we work very collaboratively with the departments on their needs, both for capital outlay and the operating funds.
And this eight point, I'm sorry, I apologize. Were you still on your thread?
Yep.
The maintenance $8.3 million transfer, is there a list of projects that goes under?
That isn't projects, that's actually the money to fund their maintenance. Prior to 1819, they received $3.1 million of capital just for general maintenance. Going into 1819, we took and increased that by 5.2, 3 million of salaries, the remainder being the rest of their maintenance budget, and that makes up the 8.3.
And this goes directly to Ms...
Yeah, it goes into the maintenance budget for her to be, her and her team to do maintenance. They did make a request this year to increase that by a million. The committee has approved it, and it's in the proposed. If it passes, then that number would go to 9.3. It doesn't necessarily relieve the general fund anymore because Ms. Hand has been, they've been having overruns, and she's been using other funds to cover that, so this is due to those overruns in agreeing they need the additional million dollars.
And then I had to quit another question. On the debt service, we're right at about 36.7, 6, right in there. And when I was looking at our paperwork that you gave us yesterday, on page 33, it talks about fund balances that we have from QZAB, SBE, and COPS. It looks, and I just wanted a clarification, that we took the 4.3 million dollars and used it to pay principal, oh, you got it right in front of you.
Yeah, I have mine. No, no, sir. QZAB is a totally different capital outlay funding source from LCI. You'll remember the capital outlay plan, there's about four or five different sources of funds, capital outlay, debt service, sales tax, impact fees, PICO, CO, capital outlay, debt service. QZAB in the debt service was a small bond that we got, was that for the lighting project? I forget back then. It was in 2004, it was only like 3.5 million dollars, it was through the state. Payments were made the first few years after that into a sinking fund, which think of it as a bank, a savings account. And then over the last years of that, it has been earning interest to gain us the 4.3 million to pay that off. So we paid back a portion we were required to for the first three to four years, was it four, five years? And then from there, that money's been earning interest over the last 10 years approximately to bring it to the balance required to pay that bond off today. We've not had to make any payments on the bond yet, but we will pay them off this year, and that will go away. So that is money that's been growing in the savings account since 2004.
Okay, so if you, and here's where I was looking at it. It says the estimated budget principal payment for 2018-19 was $18,275,000 on page 33.
Yes.
And then it jumps to $23,083,000. So the total is your estimated budget, which is indicative of what you had down here, which was roughly about 36, 37 million, but then it jumps up that extra 5 million, and I apologize because I thought that that was what that piece was, but can you explain that increase?
Well, actually, it is when you, or maybe not, is, of course, the QZAB payment, it is in there. So that junk that you've seen are to pay off the QZAB, and if you continue down that column, 2019-20, because the QZAB is a COPS, you will see that fund balance for QZAB goes to zero. And so it is higher than the normal because we are required to pay off the QZAB this year, and we are using money that was accumulated over the life of the bond in the debt service fund.
So you just basically took it, and that's where it's falling into the debt service for next year. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So basically, the summary of this page is, we have another $1.3 million that we're going to get to spend on the list. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry.
Oh, it's quite, it's almost a million, not quite a million.
More money is the A.
Because we had already, we had already added 400,000, so it's 15.2 to 16.2.
Okay. Well, plus the 400,000, right? I mean, well, subtract, I mean, it's...
Yeah, we're there, we're together, we're good, you're right there. So our next slide, and at this point, I'm going to take over the presentation. Thank you, Wendy, very good job. Here, we're going to bring forth, we're bringing forth some estimates on the projects recommended by board members. I know Ms. Hand in particular has been doing a lot of work on this, so that's why we've asked Ms. Hand to join us today. AC in the locker rooms is nine sites. Estimated cost is $250,000 per site, for a total, if we did them all at once, of 2.25 million.
Can I ask a quick question about one since it was mine? What was the, why did we end up with nine sites up? What was the, did we just run out, like, in the middle of putting them in, or was there like...
Wow, that's the one question I...
Is there a geographical, it seemed like it brought my business, it seemed like...
Maybe that's why I didn't know.
But, okay, all right. I was just curious, that's all. Like, are they all, they're all middle schools and high schools, obviously? Are they all central area, or spread out?
Yeah, they're, they're spread out.
Yeah.
I think it was probably just a function of as gym air conditioning was added. We added gym air conditioning to several schools, did not add locker room air conditioning at the same time.
Got you.
So it was a function of how the schools were developed, I believe.
Sure, thank you.
On athletic tracks, and Ms. Hand, I forgot to ask you, on the resurfaced and rubberized, if they're getting both, does the cost go to the combined $500,000?
Yes.
So there are five sites for resurfacing of the track. This is where the track itself is in poor condition. That's 300,000, a track of 1.5 million. There are six sites that would like the rubberized surface, that is another $200,000, and that would be a million two. Ribbon curving sites, there are three to ribbon curve the tracks. Ribbon curving sites, there are three to ribbon curb the tracks, and that is 70,000 dollars per site at 210,000 dollars.
Are those six sites all high schools?
Yes, they are.
What is ribbon curving?
So that's a question, that's my question. It's an edge treatment along the track, so it keeps the edge of the track.
Crumbling in the side?
Especially those, like if you have vehicles coming across the track.
Can I just ask, I should, I must have missed this, I think you said that the five resurfacing are in the six rubberized?
There's six in rubberized because Coco High School has been resurfaced but has not been rubberized, and they are interested in.
And rubberized, so they are the same, the five?
The other five are the same.
Okay, thanks.
And is there a reason why we wanted to go to rubberized?
These schools have asked.
Okay.
Because some schools have it, and other schools would like to have it.
Gotcha.
Is there benefits?
They're faster.
Well, I believe FHSAA requires a school to have a rubberized track to host a state competition. Is that okay? I think that's.
The state competition is run actually through an RFP process, so my hunch is they probably wouldn't get selected for, through that RFP process. But just the conditions of running are just favorable to the runner. And I believe the primary reason is impact, so the rubber, for people who know these things better than me, helps with the impact for the runner.
Thank you.
Is one of these Viera High School?
No.
Okay. Because I was going to say.
Okay, any further questions on tracks? The next was correctly, AC issues at Central Middle, there is none, no current estimate available, open plans do exist in Anderson, Creel, Pinewood, Gardendale for preliminary design for the 21 budget cycle. Ms. Han, do you want to add anything to your comments there?
I'd like to add a little bit on the central middle schools, I may.
Sure.
Can I go back to that? We have sales tax projects planned at the D. Meadowlands coming up next summer, and the central energy plant that serves all three schools. We've basically finished our project at Central, which did not include any part of the central energy plant. However, we're looking at for the design of that central energy plant to serve all three schools, probably adding a third chiller to have a redundant chiller. I've got some folks analyzing that now, and then we're going to be developing this double work and took that out for RFPs.
I think maybe the notes got mixed up, it being note number two.
Yeah, I think they did too.
To do a longer, second half of one.
Yeah, point two, opposite.
I'll say, oops.
That's why when I was reading it, I was like, stop tonight. Okay. Concession stand at Merritt Island High School, 160,000. And then the note I read to you goes with the next one, which are walls that open plan schools. Ms. Han, do you want to talk about that one?
Only that I'd like to defer or collaborate with our leading learning folks to make sure that this is in fact something that is necessary for improving the educational environment, but certainly we can do it, it is a priority for them. We just have not really gone down that path yet.
I appreciate it, because I know I've had teachers at Anderson talk to me about. And now when I think about technology and how, if one classroom's using technology and what they have is divider right now, is maybe a bookcase, the other, the other class gets the same lesson whether they want it or not. So I worry about that. And then safety wise, you know, we're all big about safety, and so let's hope this never happens, but if somebody should get in, there's no lock doors. So anyhow, just something to think about.
Not to go back or grab the athletic thing that you sent out, and if I could chase back to the athletic fields or the tracks. When I'm looking at this, it says failed, right, at the high school, were Viera High School, Rockledge High School, Melbourne High School, McCarty Stadium, if that makes any sense?
You're looking at the assessment?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
I'm sorry.
Is that the build or the track? Because we have, you have an updated track assessment done.
Okay.
And so I've got Rockledge, Melbourne, Coco Beach, West Shore, and Oakdale as failed track.
And they're not hosting any events at all?
I do not know.
Okay.
I know Melbourne, I know Ohio.
Right, I was looking at the, yeah, I was just looking at, some of them are still hosting a little bit, and some of them can't because they have like weeds growing through them. So that was all. And when I was looking at the failed list here, it looked like we only had, because Viera High School is in the process of getting theirs funded through, you know, raising funds, so, okay. All right, sorry. I was just trying to identify how many true high schools we were looking at that needed that. So thank you.
Next is the playgrounds, roughly 50,000 dollars per site. Sue, do you want to, is there any other?
Sure, depending on where you want to go with playgrounds, Facilities does not really support new playgrounds, so if a school needs a playground, that's on them, and they have to do fundraising. And over time, there's been some inequities in that process. Typically, they'll go through the school initiated project process and do fundraising locally, use our local match. We've done several playgrounds under that program, but there are schools that just can't access those funds. So over time, we've seen more and more disparities in what schools have for playgrounds. The other, the other consideration with playgrounds is that we do some sort of like basic maintenance on them, but we don't replace them. So if it's falling down, you end up with crime scene tape around your playground, and we might take it out for you, but that's the extent of what we're able to do. And so if you consider playgrounds sort of analogous to athletic facilities, or as part of the academic mission, then we maybe should think about playgrounds a little bit differently. But I had this conversation with Mr. Theodore a few years ago, and he said, well, that's nice in theory, but you're buying a big expense if you do that. And so bring that into the facilities realm for something that we have to replace failing playgrounds. And he was, he was right. So there's two sides to that whole conversation about playgrounds.
Ms. Alfred, do you remember when we were bringing you the money from the Space Coast Daily Park? We had mentioned, I said, we should do something for this, and you had said, we need playgrounds. And I think we gave board direction to take that fund and look into going that direction. Does that make sense? Do you want to bring it up?
I don't recall if we gave direction on that at all.
But it was something we wanted to look at. Does the board entertain any thoughts about identifying, because she's right about the Title I schools, we just, they don't have the playgrounds.
Well, I think that was the purpose of, it doesn't have any money on the last, I don't know anything, but the school initiated projects match equity, but that was the purpose of that, so the schools, like Jupiter has taken them a long time to reach the 25,000, they're finally almost there. But, you know, whereas Meadow Lane can do it like that. So I think that was a purpose of that, is so that there's still a match, but there's some help.
And I agree, and I agree, and there's just some places that no matter what we do match it, they're not going to be able to raise any money. I just know my Oakdale quarter, so that, and I understand that that's there. But I think that we should take the revenue that was funded there, that is not allocated in any of our budgets, and possibly use it towards funding some of the playgrounds, or look towards that as an idea. Does anybody have an objection to that?
I'm not ready to decide, to say right now what I would think on that, but I would also say that those schools also have other possibilities. For example, Jupiter, when Loverbar came in and did some of their projects, they were given quite a bit of money that helped them get closer to their 25,000 dollars they were trying to get to. And those kinds of schools, you know, if we can encourage one of our business partners and whatever to, you know, they have that opportunity where they may not have parents and grandma grandpa, and the community can buy chocolate bars for them to get there. They do have resources with our community partners to raise that amount. It's more work, but.
If I may, Capeview is putting in two playgrounds. And if you're familiar with the city of Cape Canaveral, I'm very familiar as I live there, it is a very diverse community, and there are more poor people than there are well-to-do. She, the principal there went out, she got restaurants, who helps spaghetti supper, she worked with the Kiwanis, and she went to the city, who gave her another 10,000 dollars, and she's putting in two brand new playgrounds, and as I understand, they have a ribbon cutting coming up in the next week or so. So that might be a good place to see, what did she do to help, help do that moving forward to help some of these schools? But there are a lot of our schools who do struggle with their location and their parents, and can't get to it, so.
I have schools that don't even have a PTO because they don't even have a single parent. They would step up to do it. So to say that they're going to be able to heavy lift the extra percentage and go out and do that on top of the backs of what they already do, I think it's difficult. And I'm not saying that the funding that we get from Space Coast Daily Park is going to put in playgrounds across the entire county, but I think it's a funding source that's not already allocated, and I think that it's something that we can use to moving forward towards playgrounds in the Title I schools.
To offer an additional alternative perspective, I do, business partners are phenomenal, but one of the challenges that we face in the north end of the county is we don't have significant business partners. The majority of the business partners on the north end are small mom and pop organizations that are nickel and dime throughout the year for all of our schools. So for example, at Oak Park Elementary, they've been without a playground for a year now at least, I think. They've been trying to fundraise, they don't have a lot of rental support, there are just not a lot of companies in that area, whereas even in Cape Canaveral, while you might have a diverse population, you also have a lot of industry in that area. So I think, Mr. Susan, your point is, is well taken, that they're, I think they have to look at it individually, so.
In our, in our notes, excuse me, not in the notes, but in the, I think it was in the form that was on the, I can't remember whose form, but it said something about there's a, there's some statutory with playgrounds, there's something that falls under that, or there's a requirement to have a playground or something, and I can't remember what it said, I can't remember whose, whose form it was on. Is there, is there any kind of statute?
I don't know if there is one.
No, okay, never mind, I don't see.
Well, it makes sense that we have playground because we have to have so much PE. I mean, you would just think that it's a mandate.
A bunch of all.
I know, and I guess all you can do is play catch, or, you know, I don't know, it is a, it's a hard thing. And I don't think your idea is so bad.
So, and I understand what you're saying. I try as hard as I can to try to get as much money for my business partners I met with. I met with the PTO at Longwood, I met with them all and said, hey, here's a list of the business partners in the area, gave them the phone numbers, did everything, I said, I can't go out and do it, you guys go bust it out. They just come up short, and unfortunately, some of our Title I schools don't even have PTO presidents, and it falls on the shoulders of the teacher.
FYI, the Westmore School for Science also doesn't have a PTO.
It's okay, I'm just saying.
Sometimes it's not money involved.
I understand, but the problem is, is that we have deficiency there, and what's happening is, is across the entire county. Like, I have my Suntree, they're getting a brand new playground, and then I drive right over to Creel, and, you know, Sable, and they're on the same playgrounds from a long time ago. So I would like to move forward with taking that money that's already not part of our budget and putting it towards special funds so that they could possibly fill that match that you're looking for, or help out, or looking to make, giving the, I guess, the district an opportunity to bring back the recommendation.
What are all those funds?
They go into the general fund.
So they're allocated through our operating budget?
Just miscellaneous. Miscellaneous revenue coming in. If there's any, any facility usage fees, if there's anything we have to do at the site, like you look at a school, there's custodial and stuff, and I don't think we have that with that, but any, anything we have to do at the site would come out of that, and the remaining funds are just falling into the general fund.
Do you know what that dollar amount is?
I do not.
For the park?
For Space Coast.
It's something like 20, 30,000 dollars a year. It's not significant, it's a small amount. I think it would help get it to one school, playground if it was.
Yeah, the match is 25,000 dollars maximum, right?
If you have a playground, they have to match.
Right, they do have any rights.
Or you could take that. It would give creative funding opportunities for schools that can't make that gap. That would be it. So does the board want to give direction to do that? Do you guys feel good about that?
How about if I bring back to the board of what the revenue trend has been, and a recommendation of what to use for those funds?
Can we also determine, Ms. Klein, how many of our schools are needing playgrounds?
Yes, we can determine that massive list, yes. Thank you. If there's no more questions or discussion on playground, Mr. Susan had asked for athletic facility renewal to be added as of yesterday afternoon, so there are no cost estimates on that.
That was just, and just so you guys knew, it wasn't a, it wasn't a, it was an idea to talk about it for discussion, but there's no way that Ms. Han is in a position to even identify what the needs are for the athletics to begin with a tiered system. So I just wanted to possibly talk about it as an idea moving forward, not as an actual one.
Well, I think her assessment from last year has everything already kind of in a tiered system, and she has everything that's listed for or failed priced out, so.
We're in the process of updating this. It's, I'm confident enough that it gives you a rough order of magnitude, but you're having one person go out with all of these facilities and update this.
You don't want to ask the athletic directors if they're.
No, we're actually going to touch base with Mr. Cheraz, that'll be part two.
No, I didn't say that. That's wrong.
So at this point, we're just back at the capital outlay request, which you've been looking at for the last couple of weeks. You do have the list in a little bigger format, this is rather tiny for the screen in front of you, and nothing has changed on this list since you last looked at it. The proposed allocation is the allocation we presented to you in June. It has been used for the tentative budget because we needed something, but it is certainly subject to change from any direction to the board. Would not be considered a final budget until the September 10th board hearing after approval. And unless, at this point, we end our presentation, and we would turn the rest of the time over to either answer questions from the board or have board discussion. I do believe my peers are prepared to answer any questions you may have on capital request. Ms. Alfred, you had specifically said you had some. So at this point, we would turn it over to the board for discussion.
Before we, I think I already asked this question, but just clarifying, the 16.1 million, is that included? Because there was a, the 400,000.
It does.
So we need to add 400,000 to that then?
No, we've actually, we are, we have found a way to utilize the 400 for what its intended purpose was.
So we really do have 16.1 to work?
We have 16.156.
Okay.
And I asked a question.
Yes.
I know there's three different things, and I remember reading them. So we've got number 14, the lowest performing school capital support. So what does that mean, the lowest performing? Is it your C school versus an A school? Or what do you mean lowest performing?
That means Sullivan and Ms. Klein provide a list every year of the schools that are having academic challenges or other issues that need our support, and so we want to be completely aligned with our educational mission. So our goal is to support them with facilities. A perfect example of that is the Endeavor Backer project.
And then, then we go down to, but there's no money there. Then the school, number 18, school initiated projects match equity. So how is that different from the number 24?
So, number 24 in the first iteration, and Penny, correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly, is that the first iteration of number 24 had 200,000, which is kind of what we've been doing.
Correct.
We have requested additional money because we, for the first time, exceeded the demand. However, as Ms. Superstated earlier, when she came out with her recommendation, I felt it was important that we had some money set aside for our folks that really can't do the match. So I asked her to take 100,000, 50, and 50 out of two of my other projects and add it to this project. So that's where the 300 came from, and my intention is to work with Ms. Klein and Dr. Sullivan to kind of frame out how that match program might work for schools that really can't do 50% match.
So it won't have two separate lines, but you're going to reconstruct?
I'll re-ex this a little bit.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes. One of the, maybe, maybe with board direction, our request for consideration on the prioritizing of items next year. of items next year. I love that you all have prioritized student safety, safety, health, and security having direct impact to students, but one of the questions that I have in this, in the packet is regarding an item that I feel is an issue of concern for staff. So I'm wondering if perhaps next year, when the committee is evaluating the proposals, if we could include safety, health, and security having direct impact to students and staff?
And staff?
Because I feel like that's a real issue. On the network infrastructure refreshment project, the request was for $500,000, it's coming in at $200,000, but I know that there is a significant return on investment of those dollars. Has there been an evaluation of how much we will be, in effect, losing by not capitalizing on the full $500,000 amount?
Stay the last part.
So, so the request was for $200,000.
Correct.
I'm sorry, the request was for $500,000, it's being proved at $200,000. How much more could you maximize, in essence, how much are we losing in E-rate return dollars, basically, by not funding the additional $300,000 on that project request?
Basically, we're just, we'll be falling further behind in our refreshment, which means we'll have older devices out there, higher likely rate of failure at the switch level, so the infrastructure of the switches, the things that you don't necessarily see, the stuff in the walls, I guess is less than to say it's, as we don't fully fund that, the likelihood of failure to those systems just gets higher and higher each year, similar to the computer refreshment. We get some dollars, so we do what we can, but that, now you have another group of devices that's being added on to another group of devices around these refreshments, so this kind of makes the problem bigger for the next year, the next year just grows, and the chance of the failure grows with it.
Don't we, so through the E-rate program, don't we get, are we maximizing our investment through the E-rate program? In essence, if we spend, I think it said on here something, at $2 million, we're getting $10 million worth of?
Yeah, we're at 80%, so we pay 20%, we get 80% given to us through E-rate, but that comes aside us.
Okay.
We're in the middle of a five-year cycle, so during those years out of cycle, we try to fund it through here to keep the refreshment going until the cycle is back around.
Okay, all right, thank you. The other one that I had a question on, um, the capital support for security projects, there was reference that we had pulled back $400,000. That was the original $400,000 that we couldn't use the year it was allocated, we did not advertise security, so it's kind of been holding out there. So we were giving it back to them within this request, and then we're working some of what's left and remixing that around, we'll go towards facility assessment and some other things. But that was at, the money was given in a year we didn't advertise for it, and we couldn't use it for that, so we're trying to place and swap here. Number six, bus lift replacements. The request was at $297,840, we're proving at $150,000, and it says we're only funding two lifts. Are those our only two problem lifts?
I believe that was the accounting proposal, because my proposal was to fund the whole thing.
Okay.
And that was because we're at a risk, if an employee is standing under it and it collapses, and the age is fairly large on the safety, so while safety of staff wasn't in the ranking in this case, I felt safety of staff outweighed in the risk and the liability. So my recommendation was to fully fund that.
The next one, the fuel tank replacement, how many tanks is that addressing?
I believe that one's not funded. Uh, oh, no, it is, it just replaces the one at 520.
It's just one tank that's being funded for a replacement?
There's one at plant operations and maintenance that we're doing this year with current year money, current as in a week or a year, and then this is the next project after that year.
The LED lighting retrofits, which came in initially at $450,000, and it looks like we're funding it $200,000. It's my understanding that we get a significant amount of savings from that transition.
I had initially funded that at a higher amount, and that was one of the ones that Ms. Han had talked to me about, and that she preferred putting the money elsewhere than there, and asked me to reduce that allocation.
So if I could chime in on that, too, we think this is really important, if you fit out in the schools that have LED lighting, it's great. So, I wanted to have some money in, but, you know, specifically allocated for this, but I also have my capital renewal money, and at the end of the year, my intention was this past year to go ahead and put some more money into LED lighting, but I've pretty much spent down everything I have. So it's, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. We're also trying to pick up LED lighting as we do capital projects, so it's not just this $200,000, it's this and other projects that can pick up the LED lighting as we're in there.
And if I may, Ms. Han, at that point, it's probably important to go ahead and note something we haven't said, when you start looking at some of Ms. Han's projects where the proposed allocation is zero, as I mentioned, and we, and Ms. Han and I have been talking about this, it's a lump sum of money with no real planned project, and all of these things could either have their own allocation or be used with that, and so we were trying to look at the overall projects, so where we may not have funded specific projects, I do believe even the capital renewal that I provided was a little higher than accounting, but we've tried to make sure somewhere there's some money that they can work on.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, FFNE for secondary schools. Do we have, it says currently 50% of the fiscal year '19 funding remains available?
No, it does not.
Well, it was at the time.
At the date of that thing, that was true, we're down to about $1,000.
Okay. So, um, but it looks like, Ms. Felk, that you're recommending fully funding that $150,000?
Yeah, they tend to spend that money every year, there's the, and if you remember back to when we had extra money that Ward gave away.
We've never had extra money.
We don't anymore, no. Didn't really then either, but the schools' needs are just so great, and that is really the only funding, is what Ms. Jette Klein and Dr. Sullivan get. They are very diligent with their funds, they don't ask for the moon. It's always a pleasure trying to work with them and fit their needs, but trying to meet our schools' needs and impact our students, to me, seem to be a priority.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I obviously don't too...
You're fine, I'm gonna stick that one out.
On the endeavor renovation with the restrooms, is that, I guess the easiest way to ask the question is, how is that, how many primary classrooms are we going to be able to impact without fully funding the request on that?
So I'm going to pick up the rest of that in my capital renewal.
Okay, so you're going to be able to go ahead and do the, all of the, awesome.
The Southwest Middle School courtyard canopy, is that already being done?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that was part of the, when we did the board item, it was about a $600,000 board item, and I mentioned that it was intended, it was also being funded in the, in this year's capital proposal, and I'd like for that to end up going back to my capital renewal, because I accounted for it last year, I wanted to get it done before the steel prices went up, so I moved it up, knowing that it was in this proposal.
So funding that $400,000 will actually increase the dollars available for capital renewal?
Yes, ma'am.
It'll just swap that, okay.
I appreciate that you're watching steel prices, Ms. Klein. Now she has to watch the prices for goat feed. Are we getting goats? Sorry, we have to say goat every meeting now, so.
My problem, Mr. Ross, here, so he can update everyone on goats.
We're awaiting the goat updates.
Is he overseeing the goats?
He's in charge of our goat program.
Our goat program, we have goat programs.
Seventeen, the stadium upgrade to meet ADA standards. It says that we have no schools specifically identified, so I think, Ms. Han, from previous conversations with you, we kind of sit back and cross our fingers and hope that there is no, no issue that forces us to have to address that particular shortcoming.
That one was just done.
No, although we do that method a lot, we don't do it with this particular issue.
Okay.
Subsequent to that, the list, whatever date you have, we did go back and look at our list of stadiums that need upgrade. We have not done Cocoa Beach, and that is, that was funded this year, we just had such a full plate, we didn't get to it, so that's next. So that's why we need to add additional money to our ADA stadium upgrades, but there, we will have a request next year. I think that's the last one that had full, that needed full accommodation, the rest of them are coming from one side or the other has a problem.
This was, one of the things in working with Ms. Han, there was over $350,000 out there for ADA projects, not 18, 19, in the 17, 18, and so in working with her, seeing how those came, where the dollars fell out, and allowing her to reassess to move forward, just considering we didn't have a lot of money to work with this year.
We, we're actually a year behind on this program, so we did satellite this year, and then we have funding for Cocoa Beach that's already in the 19 budget that I'm assuming will roll, and then we'll ask for additional funding the following year.
The parking lot and, I'm sorry, where do you go, Ms. D?
I have, oh, never mind, I just saw something in it previously, oh, no. I have one more question.
Okay.
The Innovate Steam Cup, $250,000 not currently recommended to be funded, is that something that could potentially be supported through the computer refreshment and the secondary FFNE?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
In general, whoever wants to...
It's not my project, it's Stephanie Archer's project, so I can't steal to it. The FFNE funds are snug, though. If you think with 28 schools, it's an average of like $4,000 a school, and so a, a set of classroom furniture is $5,500, and so we just kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, I had to do a bunch of classrooms at Kennedy, a bunch of classrooms at Valley. My primary concern for capital is the state of our classrooms, so I'm putting everything in the classrooms, we just had to do the whiteboards at Southwest, because they spell chalkboards. So, I don't think I have any loose funds available for that, but I'm not entirely positive what Stephanie's asking for that's not my project.
Okay.
Shereen is here.
Oh, Shereen's here, thank you.
I'm standing in the corner. So it was for some, you know, work construction wise, where you're fitting some of their big background, that's left partition between, and I have a gear lot set up that we'd like to, to a local car, and we'd like to get some commedium boards in there as well, as well as the function. We have a project going on this Saturday where we have a local church, and some of the students are coming out, and we are refinishing tables and 60s. So, we're trying to work with no budget at all right now, and all materials are donated by local company, so.
And I saw, by the way, the table that you guys did turned out beautifully, so kudos to you guys for really, you know, maximizing what you can do with very little. Given all of their hard work, Russell, is there possibility that you could, with your computer renewal dollars, assist with providing some computers for those students so they can access the software for their program?
So on our computer refreshment, our request was $5 million. We're at 1.2. We are pretty tight as well right now, we're on a trajectory of being close to a 30-year computer refreshment cycle, which our computers are not going to last 30 years. And as you know, DCP has dwindled down from 1.4 million to less than 300,000, so, and that usually helps us out quite a bit as well, so we are in a tight spot when it comes to computer refreshment, because all we do is work and do the best we can, but we are in a pretty tight spot on the computer refreshment this year.
So Shereen, have you worked, reached out to Computers Advancing Education to see if they might have anything that would fit the needs of those systems?
So we're lucky to have some computers, and Mr. Ford was giving those to us, this is what some of the programming that they'd like to implement, we've worked with Jan Schulz, but some of the programming and personnel, they may require a robust computer to be able to run some of that programming, so until we get those in, and their tech has been working on them, we've got to see what they have, how, pretty good process, but that's the question, can we load that software on there, what else can we put on there, whether it is reasonable or not.
Right.
Do you have a list of the requirements for the, what you need for those computers?
Yes, Jan has given it to us.
Can you forward that to me? Because Warren Webb just reached out to me and said that they're bringing a truck from Virginia, because since they're up in the north, we've talked before, it might be a, I mean, they're, they're pretty big, so that might be a little help.
I'm done, Katie.
Okay. I was just going to see, the parking lot modifications, the stadium upgrades, oh, no, no, you were talking about that one. The lowest performing schools capital support and the Jupiter walkway, some, some kind of renewal things that were some rate, are those you're going to be able to catch in this?
So Jupiter will catch, I believe. Parking lot upgrades, we decided with this, we'd stick our toe in the water, because that's like athletic facilities, there's 83 sites that need parking lot upgrades, and Jim works on the worst of the worst, but they're all bad, traffic circulation is pretty much all bad, so we could spend a whole lot of money in this arena, so that's not something I typically deal with unless it's really bad, that's lower on my priority list.
But the, I think, the lowest performing schools capital support?
So, we will pick a little bit of that up, depending on what else gets me.
I know University Park had a lot of this, having a lot of work done.
So we're doing some sales tax work, and we've got some capital thrown in there, and we're not going to do everything they want, but we'll do, we'll get some pieces. They're a great example of athletic facilities and how that relates to elementary schools, but I remember walking out there with Ms. DS, and there's basketball hoops that are just corrupted, and we were kind of like, okay, how, what's the path to getting this addressed, and there just is no path, and we've got to figure that out, and I'm sure that that situation is replicated elsewhere in the district.
So you have a very nice cafeteria now.
Yep.
So if we were to need to be able to educate our community on those elements that we just can't even consider supporting in the district, like athletic facilities and playgrounds at elementary schools, like parking lot safety at our schools, do you have the capacity within your department to develop kind of a wishlist of, you know, if we had $15 million, we could address this, or it's going to take $80 million to address athletic fields, or...
To some extent, so the quality of that report is relational to the time we would spend on it, so I can give you some high-level overview numbers that are kind of high-level overview with a limited amount of time, but the major effort is kind of like in our facility assessment arena, that it's like a major effort to get that done, so that's kind of our priority for doing our assessments. Jim's team is out doing our athletic facility, so we'll have that, and I think the next round is going to be like playgrounds and park courts and things like that. What we haven't done is really an assessment, and I know of our parking lots, we will pick some of that up in our facility assessment that Jim's team is getting done, so, I'm sorry, that was a very long answer, to say, to some extent, yes.
And when, remind me again the timeline on completion of the facility?
Towards the end of the year.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
End of calendar, end of calendar year.
Super, thank you.
Yes, one question specifically, I just, my, you know, not, this would be my first go-round, and not realizing that the collaboration that went to this number that, on our paper it just said CFO amount, you know, that this is something you guys kind, you know, especially with your projects and where, you know, I know we were all supposed to send you rankings on amounts, but it kind of sounds like you guys have been on top of that, but we still need to talk about what to do with the extra 1.3, or it's not 1.3, whatever it is.
The night, it's, you can see it at the bottom of this page, your extra handout we gave you, and you'll also notice I removed the word CFO, for propose, because that's really what it is after all the collaboration. There's $956,000 left. If you asked my recommendation, I would say technology... If you asked my recommendation, I would say technology, particularly after the hit they took in the FEFP with their classroom, digital classroom funds. There certainly are a lot of other things, including the board list, which I'll put back up, that you may want to put that too.
Can I ask a quick?
No, okay.
At what point during the year do you know that projects are going to be a little over, a little under, and start getting that contingency? What point is that during the year?
So I attempt to manage the capital renewal money that I'm given so that I don't hit the contingency. Like, I see that as my own contingency.
Right.
So as you see board items for sales tax projects, and we have, either it's underfunded or we need more work to do it well, that's where I'm pulling out of that capital renewal fund. Where I would anticipate using contingency is if we had a major storm, or if we had a major situation where there was a major roof failure, or something like that is a one or two million dollar project that I just can't absorb within my allocation.
Best-case scenario is that contingency just keeps rolling every year, because then the full available dollars from the new dollars can go to capital. You know, if we use that up in a year, then we're going to be wanting to bring it back up to a recommended level. But as long as, if we can leave it there and only save it for like storms or the dire emergencies, then we can put 100% above maintenance, debt service, and property insurance into play, and that will benefit everybody who needs those capital dollars.
And this contingency is on top of the reserves in there?
There are no specific reserves within capital. What falls to fund balance in capital are appropriated or planned for projects within the LCI that are crossing years. So right now, Ms. Hand and her team are working on projects that they started in June and will finish in July. Those fall into the fund balance to be re-appropriated in the new year. Sales tax always has money that falls into fund balances. They're gathering the funds and collecting to have enough to do their project and/or it crosses years. And then impact fee is the other big chunk of that, and that's where we're saving money to build schools. And until she begins actually building that school, and we've appropriated it, but there, we will continue to build a fund balance in there in anticipation of a potential future school. So unlike the general fund, the only true reserve in here is the contingency of 4.3 to 4.5 we try to keep in LCI. The rest is money that is planned for a project that is either in progress or not yet started.
Mr. Fer, earlier you said that there were some areas in prior year's budgets that had not been used, so you were attempting to use that prior to using contingency?
Correct.
What are those areas in prior year budgets that we didn't fully use?
Well, one was capital renewal at the time when we were doing this project, and I know Ms. Hand has been spending quite a bit of that more recently, getting projects done. Just kind of looking through, I've got a most more recent list. We've got program-related facility needs, has money in it. $476,000.
Cannot be used at...
I think there is some...
I have to acknowledge Ms. Blackburn's...
Some of these have plans for. There is nothing in this list that is not planned for. Before I give Ms. Hand a heart attack, she has plans where it's like the FMIS. It is in this list. It is prior year monies that have not been spent, just time.
Because you haven't gotten to the project yet, or you're in the middle of it, or you haven't...
Or we haven't written a purchase order on it yet.
Okay.
So is there old funds out there? Yes. And we encourage our departments who have old funds to spend those and get them done with, because you don't care about the detailed accounting, but we have to literally account for each one of those years totally separate, and there are different rules for each year and the whole bit. So that's more of what I was meaning. If they've got money, they need to be spending it. This is also, the only things that are recurring in this fund are the transfers, maintenance, debt service, and property insurance. And those are only recurring in that those are commitments that either, that a prior board has said for the maintenance and property insurance, we're relieving general fund by always paying for it with the capital. Debt service is recurring because that's the way the statute for certificates of participation work. You get a college bond, and you pay for it with your LCI. Every year is new dollars to be newly allocated for new projects. And that's one reason why I started the conversation, and Ms. Hand and I've had that in Mr. Cheeto. Instead of just going, we need 5 million every, what's the plan for that? Because that helps provide in a short funding scenario, a better evaluation of where the money needs to go than just a pot of money. That also ensures that we're spending the money on the projects that we should be, and that we're not just, well, what if something happens? Let me hold it. And when you have, don't have excess capital funds, the last thing financially that we should do is just set a whole bunch of money aside, you know, well, I may need this in the future, let me hold it. And then we're keeping some important initiatives recurring in this district.
Where are our federally connected student dollars?
Those are all part of the general fund now. That was 18, 19. They will be moved from ever being capital again and moved into the general fund, and the recurring portion that going forward became part of the salary.
Don't they have that decision to move them to operating?
Yeah. General fund is in operating.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
That was part of the 18, 19. 17, 18, get my years right, 17, 18.
Prior to your...
Yeah, it was part, no, she was on board. Dr. Blackburn was still here when that discussion was...
I remember the discussion with Ann.
And Mr. Ziegler, and there was a lot of conversation.
About them moving on.
Yeah, and that's where the $700,000 came from.
That was spread amongst board members and so forth.
That was made right this moment. I'm getting my years mixed up, whether it was 17, 18, or 18, 19. I think it was 17, 18. That it moved over and just funded the part of the recurring priorities that year. So it's no longer in the capital. If you want it back in the capital, then we have to find new dollars to replace it in the operating or cut.
Is that 2.3 million? What was that?
Yeah, it, 2.3 to 2.5, it varies depending on the actor she used to calculate it.
I have a question. What is the language in the, if you guys know, in the sales tax about technology, what things are allowed to fall under?
Ms. Hand, Mr. Cheeto, Yoma?
There's structure cabling.
There's two categories.
There's three, actually. So there's structured cabling, which are kind of the big projects we've done at Rock Cliff. We've got one from the Bayside, there was like seven or eight of those. There's a category that is technology support, that's air conditioning and electric, that kind of goes with our facility renewal, so that we add student stations like data ports and things like that, or we're putting air conditioning in computer equipment rooms, that type of work. So I typically spend those two, and then the third category is the one that Russell's department spends on, I call them widgets, but phones and touch.
Phones, the new phone systems, Wi-Fi, switching, switches, and that.
So why can't ET classroom infrastructure fall under sales tax?
Some of it does. There's other things that, I mean, there's just, we could spend all day in ET because we have cabinets that, some of it is cabinets. The cabinets are holding the technology, which I don't think falls into the necessary categories, but those cabinets are overheat because they're filled with technology. We're taking the doors off of some of them just so that they can cool down, so that the targeting will be able to...
What I'm asking is, on number two, the difference between the 400 and 800 to 437,000 come out of sales tax, especially with the overage that we're getting each year and go to Russell to complete that ET classroom infrastructure?
You're already using satellites. What's available to us?
Are you using your complete portion of your percentage that we allocated for technology?
So I think the answer to that is probably, Russell and I would need to sit down and talk about that. But we look at ET as a whole bucket, and I think there's going to be some leftover funds in one of, like in 6501, versus you've fully spent 6501. The widget group has been, I think, pretty much fully spent. But I think there's going to be some funds left over, as well as contingency in the other two. And that doesn't include the money that's over above the 198 million. So I think probably is the answer to that. I just need to sit down with Russell and understand what he's buying with it, make sure that it is an eligible expense.
Ms. Hand, do you remember the percent of the over 198 million that is allocated in ET?
Yes, it was, well, we haven't acted on that, but the preliminary recommendation is about 15%.
But we haven't reached the 198 yet, correct?
Not yet, but we're very close.
So could we potentially wrap in number two and number four into the additional dollars that you have in your two ET pockets?
Perhaps. I'd like to take a closer look at that.
Number four and number two.
The network infrastructure, I don't know what that means. So it's, if it's things you have already bought with sales tax, then I think the answer is yes.
But what is that about with ET, it's a federal program?
And that's the ET classroom infrastructure? That's, okay.
So, Russell, oh, Mr. Cheeto, I'm sorry. We're at, right now, if we, we're at 1.2 million dollars for that network refreshment, and you said that that's a 30-year refreshment?
That's a computer refreshment.
Right. I'm sorry, computer refreshment, I apologize. What is the industry standard for like educational facilities, the nation?
Standard hasn't been so standard lately. Districts would like to be at about a seven-year refreshment cycle. But all districts are going up into the 12, 15-year cycle. But we are, we're even a follow behind that. Like I said, we're well to the high 20s getting to the 30-year refreshment. The 5 million would almost keep us flat where we are today. But every year we don't do that, we add years on to our refreshment cycle.
Okay. And then what was the justification for cutting the refreshment cycle here, more so than anywhere else? I mean, you guys seemed like it was added up. It seems like there was 7.4 million in ET that asked, and they got 1.85. Was that because of the breakdown, or what was the justification behind that? I just was wondering.
It was a combination of getting money from the FEFP, money that they had left out at the time that hadn't been spent, and just trying to balance the weight of facility needs, technology needs, and other needs. Mainly driven by availability of funds in what appear to be the priority. But again, you know, it wasn't just accounting or mine. We talked about it as a team, and even had one-on-one conversations with Mr. Cheeto regarding it. So nothing specific, other than trying to get a fair balance based on priorities and strategic strategies.
Okay.
We didn't realize DCP was going to be cut up when we first started.
Yeah, yeah, no, we did. We expected you to be fully funded on DCP.
Ms. Hand.
Which is why now I suggested...
Thank you, Ms. Hand. This custodial equipment renewal, and then it says mowing and grounds equipment. The mowing and grounds equipment is the possibility of, if a school wanted to mow their own grounds, that they could actually come to you. How many schools would the $75,000 cover if you were able to?
7.5.
7.5. So they're about 10 grand apiece, is what they are? And do you, and do you think that there's going to be more schools requesting lawnmowers than 7.5?
Yes, and this also picks up our own equipment for our folks. So we could probably use a little bit more resources there. We have been getting a pretty positive response from our schools in the last, I would say, month or so.
Yeah.
We've had a few elementary folks that are interested, and I'm pretty excited about it. So we want to support that, because they are definitely a force multiplier for us. And if we can provide the equipment, a lot better work will get done out there, so.
And are there not any leftovers from when everybody was doing it on their own?
I think we've, yeah, it's gone.
So next question is, is if you had to say 7.5, this would cover 7.5 schools or whatever, how many do you think are going to come in?
I don't know, Jim, have you gotten a sense of that? You've been talking this...
I mean, we've received already.
Yeah, how many schools have been?
Right now, we have six schools.
Okay. Is that including Galley?
No.
Okay.
Not including Galley.
I know a lot of schools.
You've had a few more that have contacted you, so you're thinking, so six is what we all refurbished?
Yes.
And then you're anticipating...
We've got some additional schools that are, that are talking, we're negotiating. Where are you going to mow? What are we going to mow, kind of thing? I need a commitment from them, because I'm not going to spend $10,000 if they're not going to commit to saying, we'll maintain this. So I get the commitment, I'm not going to...
So we're not talking about the district continuing to mow at the intervals that we're doing it, and they're doing in between? We're talking about they would take over the mowing of certain areas of their property?
Which would reduce our intervals to a more preferable. Do you think, because here's the question is, is that if we can do 7.5 now?
I was literally just joking. That's some of our own stuff and schools, so I would say probably four would be a good answer.
So that's, so this covers about four schools?
I would say so, because we have to cover our own stuff, too.
Sure.
The intent of our request, though, was to replace our current equipment, not, it wasn't anticipated to replace, to provide equipment to schools. That was just replace my current mowing king's equipment.
And then when you replace it, though, the ones that are underneath them can go back out to the schools?
Usually by the time we replace them, they're now worth sitting out in the school.
I guess what I'm asking for is this, because this was a big bone of contention to the point where we have goats now coming to be part mowers, right? So how much would we, if we could say that we want to give a mower to every single school that's out there that wants to request it, and in your mind, how many schools would that be, and what would that cost?
To do every school?
No, every school that negotiates accordingly, and you would give an estimation, because she's saying there's six already, we only have funding for four.
I'm saying six already have it, right? Six already have it.
Okay.
So we've already paid for six.
Might be able to.
Because we don't want to give more money to this if we're not going to, the schools aren't going to come through. But who, how many do you think, if you had to make a rough estimate, so?
I would say there'll probably be 10 more schools that come through.
And how much would that cost us?
That would be $100,000.
How much do the goats offset that cost, Jim? Do we have a goat update?
I can give you a goat update. We've reached out to a vendor that provides goats, and he says goats do not mow grass, because they will only eat down six inches, because they do not like to put their face near ground, because they get bugs. They'll eat brush and low-hanging trees and things like that. So we are actually looking at using them for retention ponds, and possibly cleaning fence, overgrown fences. It's about a third of the cost of bringing a company that does it, you know, brush-cutting company. So we're thinking or trying it. So there may be some goats on some campuses, they'll be fenced off and that kind of...
Fence me if you want.
I can assume it's going to happen.
Let me know the first day the goats are rolled out.
How did you see that?
Florida Today.
That mocked me for goats. When they get rolled out, I want my picture.
A third of the cost of hiring a company, did you catch that? Make sure I go in your quote.
And fertilizer is provided for free.
Is that literally fertilizer?
Going, going back to the, to our stream of questioning the mowers, do you, can you roughly estimate the cost savings to your department of allowing the schools to mow on their own?
We haven't really looked at it from a cost savings point of view. We've looked at it from a better level of service point of view. So, you know, the more they do, the more we can do. So I think with the high schools, it has a pretty big impact. With the elementary schools, it has an impact on their school, if we're not mowing it and they are. So every school that takes this on, it looks better out there. So from a monetary savings, it really isn't a savings, it's just we're improving our level of service by virtue of schools helping us. So I see this as a very good investment. So if our schools want to do this, we'll spend that 75. I'll pull money on elsewhere if I need to, honestly. And this is, this is a big help to us.
And it's also, I mean, in the beginning of the year, half of our, I mean, my schools, my daughter, she kept yelling at me because she's the biggest lobbyist in the county, and she hits me up with, I can't run during PE because there's weeds out there, and I go out there and they're tall, because they couldn't get to them. And so this really helps out with it, and I think it should be a priority. Thank you. Next question is box trucks purchased? What happened there? We don't need that thing?
That was for purchasing warehouse. We funded two the previous year. And so since we just funded two new ones, we felt it, based on the shortage, hold off on a third one for this year, and they could bring the request back next year. for this year, and they could bring the request back next year.
Anyone else have questions? Comments?
One last one. Sue, large project match for schools, right? So we're in here talking about Rockledge High School's track, Merritt Island's restroom facility that we know has been there, and that was John Craig's victim. He just kept asking, "We need to fund this, we need to fund this back."
The concession stand?
Concession stand, sorry.
Way back then, huh?
One of the things we ran into with Vieira was, we were saying, "Okay, well, if we apply for a match, we can get $25,000. Can we do that every other year? Is there some, have you ever looked at possibly putting together a large match program? Because this gets eaten up by all the small ones, right?
Right.
So what are your thoughts there?
So I've been thinking about this in the context of Concession Stand is probably the biggest example. Cocoa is another local high school. They have some projects they want to do. They have match funds from the city. But the $25,000 from this program doesn't really make a dent in a $500,000 project or something like that. So the problem the schools have, and Mr. Raymer illustrated this beautifully, is that they can do fundraising, but by the time they get the money for the project, the children whose parents have supported this are now graduating. So it's kind of a timing issue. And so, you know, if we had several hundred thousand set aside for like high school athletic facility enhancement match, we might actually get some of these facilities done. Other than that, I don't see a good path to getting there, because the schools are really struggling, unless some of them can do it, but some of them can't, to meet those types of needs that clearly are strong needs in the community. Now, whether they're, you know, meeting our educational goals, that's a whole nother question. But from the community's perspective, these things seem to be important, because I spend a lot of time working on them.
Yes. And I thank you so very much.
So if, and the other question I had was, it doesn't, if the average is $300,000 to resurface a track, but it could be 200, could be 325s, could be inside there.
And on the lanes, condition, and all that stuff.
Everything, so they, but just a flat number, that was a good number to look at. So if you were looking at a large facility match to actually get them to some of those schools, because Rockledge is talking about it, and they haven't had a track in a long time and everything else. But what would that look like?
So just, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but if you set aside like a half a million dollars, and we offered up to $100,000 match, something like that, for high schools. And again, literally talking off the top of my head, I'd sit down with Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Sherrill and try to talk through this. But that might give us an opportunity to do some of these larger projects.
Would it be, would there be appetite to look at doing that, except, we don't know if the schools would actually be able to pull it off, we're kind of in a nebulous? So could we possibly start something like that with the idea of using contingency this year? And then if it gets traction, we look at a possibility for funding that next year? What are your thoughts on that?
Sure.
Just a thought.
Probably a way to start would be to work with our high schools. In fact, I have a facility AP meeting tomorrow, you know, kind of talk through, if there were such a program, who would be taking advantage of it? My guess is all of them would give it a try. But I, I mean, I can think of a handful of projects that I think are ripe for this type of program.
I think Merritt Island could get there. I think they could sell birds on it.
And I think if we, if we, if you're wanting to go the route that you're talking about, that's something we can do, even once we get into the budget year, right? That's important. If she gets some.
The things we have to remember in as part of any school match is making sure they're allowable by LCI. I think most of our athletic stuff would be, but just so we all remember, then LCI does come with some restrictions.
That's right.
But I think that our athletic facilities are marked in those cases.
I think so. Okay. But in order to do that, you would need, in order for us to say we wouldn't have a problem, it looks like we had a large amount, you would need to have board direction to allow them to tap into some of those contingency funds if they did, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you need from us today? Do you need direction on this 956,000, 548,000, or are we here to discuss?
No, we're, we're looking for any direction the board has to make any changes in the allocation and/or what you would like to do with the 956,000.
If the board gave you zero direction, what would happen to that 940, 956, 48, like?
So far, I, I haven't heard any directions.
I'm saying if we gave you zero direction.
We would take it back to cabinet and that app.
And go back through and read.
And then it would be built into the final budget in September.
Absolutely.
Okay. So.
So the concession stand's only 160.
And I, and I think this about.
250.
And the auction floor is.
I don't, I don't know why it doesn't stay in that process. Like, at what point did we say, "We're, you guys, cut, cut, cut," and then we say, "Well, now, we want to pick one?"
I know. I mean, we haven't talked about, are we going to put our board number one, number two, four, five? But, but honestly, after hearing the process that you guys went through to get here, I don't know that I want to screw that. You know? Because Sue's got her, and Russell's got, I mean, obviously you want more, but.
We'd love to be able to give them more.
Yes. And we, we can, we've got $956,000! But where do we go from there?
So, I agree with you. Unfortunately, though, we continue to have certain things that never get funded. So I think the direction of the cabinet has been this, what we see in front of us, and that we should have some direction from us. And I think that unfortunately, I don't think the $165,000 for the Merritt Island, what was it, restaurants, Jim?
No, it's a concession stand with restaurants.
Concession stand with restaurants would make.
That we condemned five years ago.
I don't think, when they cut down 75,000 from 150, that that was a consideration that was needed, that they looked at, because that was a huge piece of what we dealt with last year, right? So I think having board input into what we see inside the community is very valuable. And I think that that's what we were looking to do here today. And I think.
You want to give direction for that 956, or you just wanted to have some verbal input?
I would like to give direction towards the 956. And if we can't come to some consensus, then I think that Dr. Mullins could come back with a recommendation based upon what I need for, or reset direction.
Can you make an alternate recommendation?
Yes.
Because I think that us sitting here and hashing out $956,000 is going to take until next week, right? I think perhaps we should share with our very competent committee members some areas that we would like to see considered for prioritization within this, or areas that we have concerns about the cut level, and then place it in their very capable hands for them to go through the process and, and bring back those recommendations to us, rather than, because I'll, I'll take you down for 250.
Feel like a rugby field.
I, I like that. I don't want to overreach our, I know we are in charge of directing the funding of the district, but it's also, there's a process in place that seems to be working, and I agree that our influence needs to be heard, and input needs to be given, but I think we need to stick with the process and just give our.
And let the cabinets scrap it out in three weeks.
For sure.
So you're saying that let the cabinet?
Tell them now.
We can tell them now, or.
So we're going to go down the line and share.
I think we all know that you want concession stand with bathrooms at Merritt Island. And maybe it is, they go back and rework it and say, "You'll get, you know, we'll put 25 away for this year, Cheryl, 25 next year, maybe your school can get matching 25." I don't know what that looks like on their end, but let them figure out.
That's been going on for over five years, since this is your number six.
Can I go first?
I don't think so. I think Misty should go first.
Oh, you really want me to go first?
I'm saying so.
Do we want to give everything verbally here, or?
I would.
Okay.
Not you go, he's, he came in to run.
I would like, my direction would be to give the $100,000 to operations and maintenance to cover the mowing and grounds equipment that would be needed, okay? I think that also I'd like to give full funding to the 165,000 for the, for the concession stand and bathrooms for Merritt Island. That is a multiple-year project, I think that that needed to happen. I would like to also give part of the contingency money, to be 500,000 of that in the event that we have some schools that can get to the match. I really don't think that we would have a school that could say, "We're going to do it, raise the money by the end of the year and be into the contingency before." But I'd like to give them the option that if they can pull it off, and there's a dire need to be there. And then I would like the rest of the money, which would be roughly 700, 800, no, yep, $700,000 towards the computer refreshment project. Computer refreshment.
How much is 700?
700.
You were saying the 500.
Did you just say 500, 700, 165, 100?
The 500 is out of the contingency?
He wants to take that out of the 4.3 million contingency.
If we gave 500,000 to the schools right now and said, "Go," I don't know how many of them could raise 150,000. So I don't think that we're going to get there. I think you might have one that pulls it off, a miracle, right? If they do, I think that we should give a window on the contingency to let that go. And I think it would probably be a track. So that would be just in contingency dollars. I would like to give, I'll review, I'm sorry.
No, I've got that, I've got it. I just got 500,000 at my mouth.
Sure, $100,000 for the maintenance, because I want lawnmowers to schools. 165 for your concession stand.
Now wait, hold up just a second. You're giving 100,000 based on what you said of 10 more, or you're talking about fully funding?
I'm going to, I want to put it at 175,000.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Gotcha. More than they asked for.
Well, because that's what he said. If there's 10 lawnmowers, then, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at my school saying, "You didn't get one, because I didn't put 10 in," so.
Right, and what he asked for was just for their equipment, not for the other one, that's right.
So the 100,000 on top, the 165 for the concession.
And then it's 692,000 for the computers.
Perfect. All the rest of it to computer refreshment, because my daughter and a lot of other schools that I see have sad computers, and.
Hey, Ms. Belfer.
Oh, you're throwing me in there now, huh?
Yep.
Okay. So I think, I would, and I'm not putting this in priority order, if you want to, I'm just kind of going down the list and looking at it. Computer refreshment project, I am, something I heard concerned me, and that is that this determination as to the proposed allocation was made prior to the realization that our digital classroom allocation was going away. So I would like for you to reconsider that amount to an amount that you find appropriate. Obviously, I think you guys get the, the point that I would like to support Innovate STEAM Academy. Maybe not a full amount, but training, maybe if we can, can revisit, like, what, what would have the greatest impact, and bring that back, if we, once we have a look at the, the computers that are coming in and that sort of thing. But I do want to make sure we support that, that project. For those of you unfamiliar, the fact that we have a STEAM Academy at Madison is huge for the North End, and I just want to make sure that we are supporting them to be successful and to have a great experience in it. I also, one of the things that I don't see on here, and I don't know, Sue, if this, I'm getting the impression that it doesn't fall into capital renewal, but classroom renovation? Like updating our classrooms, is that all, or Ms. Rurker, maybe, is that all coming under our FF and E? Or is, or can some of that be handled through?
That is in program-related facility needs. That's where I, that's the source of that activity.
Okay.
And so more money there is appreciated.
And I would appreciate that as well, if we can, can find some support for that. I think we, you know, we talk a lot about how much the environment impacts our students, and we have some real discrepancies in that, in classroom experience, that I would like to be able to address in some way, shape, or form.
Ms. Belfer, can I clarify? Number 14 is the lowest performing schools capital support, which I think included some classroom upgrade.
It would have.
It would have. So you want to, not necessarily, consideration wouldn't be necessarily line 14, but all classrooms or three years, were you interested in the lower, lowest performing schools? That make sense?
It does. I would say there probably is significant correlation between lowest performing schools and the need for refreshing the environment, but I would hate to limit that support to only our lowest performing schools, if we have some other situations that are really not good for kids, just because they're not in the lowest performing. Does that make sense? Did that, did I just muddy it more for you?
No, no, it gives us more flexibility, but I think we would give some additional consideration to our lowest performing, but balanced against what's the disparity, I guess.
Right. And then I also support an increase on the mowing and grounds equipment. I think that's an issue that we have been dealing with. We've been investing a lot of time and energy into dealing with, with issues around that, and I think it would make everyone happier and healthier, and be a good thing.
Ms. Chee?
Okay. I also support the, the computer refreshment. I think that's really important. If our computers are going to last, I'm impressed that they can last 20 years. Mr. Chee, I'm very impressed. I don't know what you're doing over there, but that's pretty impressive. So I think that's really important. Also, the lawn, the money for the, the lawn project, I also think that's important. I will throw in that Merritt Island, that would be wonderful for my school in many ways. It's been an ongoing project. They have to wear their cleats to go into their new auditorium when they have to go to the bathroom. Not good for the auditorium, or the carpeting, or the parking lot, or the cleats. So they walk from the field all the way to the auditorium. And if you've been to Merritt Island, you know where that is. So it's not conducive for having games there from out of town. So it's just, there's, it would solve a lot of problems, really. So I would like to have that included also, and I like what Misty has said about the, the classroom refurbish, because I certainly have been to some of my schools, and they're altering that. It looks like when I went to school. So, but yes, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Ms. Campbell? Can I go backwards? I would support an increase in our mowing and grounds equipment because of that possibly rising up after we made this list. Y'all made, y'all made this list. And then I would like to see as much as possible, I'm, yes, yes. I would like to see as much as possible go towards number two and number three with our technology. And I would prefer to, Mr. Chee, as to prioritizing those two, because obviously number two needs to happen. One of the things with number two with the air conditioning, I mean, I don't want us to throw away a bunch of money and then ruin what we just bought, because we don't have the proper environment. So I feel, like I said, I would like as much as possible to go into number two and number three. Let them figure out where it needs to be the most. So those are my priorities, and I'm certainly not against giving some to Madison or Merritt Island. Thanks, Katie.
I'm, I'm pretty simple. I think we need to take as much from the sales tax that we can within our parameters for IT, but, or ET, sorry. And then that needs to go into there. But obviously Merritt Island needs a quarter body outside. So I, you know, I'm going to let, there might, I don't know the backstory, I know nothing about it. This is the first I've heard of it.
I'll be glad to tell you over lunch.
So there might be reasonings, maybe they got some fancy something else. That's what I went in my schools, like West Shore doesn't have, and, you know, but they have other nice things. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know enough to say throw all the money there. But if it's reasonable and logical, once the research is done, I don't, I don't know why we're not giving them that, but mostly just the ET. I mean, I don't know how you make a dent, $500,000, and the 956 isn't even going to touch that just to maintain, so. That's my, my direction. Anybody else?
You can get creative with some of those locker room air conditionings with the sales tax renewal, contingency fees in the future. Just tell me you can get creative, because I didn't throw it on my list because I didn't kick away the plan yet. So you can get creative.
Ms. Belfer, do you have something else to add?
I just, going back to, and please let me clarify, Ms. Hand, that I'm not suggesting that you and your team invest an enormous amount of energy in this, but I do think that our ability to communicate the needs to our community with regard to parking lot safety and playgrounds and green tops at elementary schools are as important as our ability to communicate our needs with regard to athletic facilities. And I think those are some conversations that we really need to start having with our community. So don't need exact figures, but if you can kind of give us ballpark, I think that would be really valuable.
I think we'll be teaming that up very well in the fall.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for the presentation, Ms. Rurker and team, and.
And thank you to the committee that, you know, has worked hard to put this all together. We appreciate it. Hopefully, our input doesn't throw anybody into a loop.